Record this part. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:02. And could we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Here.
James Pearson.
Here.
Don Coart.
Here.
Harold Sands.
Guess towels aren't on yet. Okay. So could we have a motion to recess into executive session, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to recess into executive session at probably 6:03 PM.
A second to motion.
Okay, and could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Okay, so for the anybody in the public, we will return for after executive session at around 7 o'clock. So we'll see everybody in the other room. Thank you. Convene the open session of the Coventry School Committee. I have 7:08. And I'd like us to take a moment of silence as we consider the work before us this evening. Thank you. And I believe Mr. Florio, no, actually, it's Mr. Murray, sorry. If you could honor us with reading the mission statement for Coventry Public Schools, please.
I can. The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students, an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you so much. And to the attendees out there in Zoom land, I'm sorry that we're delayed. And welcome, everyone. I see a hand up, but I'm not exactly sure what that would be, Mr. Murphy. So I think I'm just going to ignore it for now since.
I wasn't sure if we.
Might be just an accident.
Yeah, until there's something to comment on.
All right. So just to inform the public, the school committee met an executive session at 6 o'clock. So we met for about an hour and a few minutes. There were several votes taken, all of them unanimous, four to zero. One was to approve the homeschooling request. The second was to approve the executive session minutes from. I think it was.
Four eight.
Four eight, okay, thank you. And also, we upheld the appeal of the superintendent's quarantine decision. And we also discussed SRP, the new SRP collective bargaining, but no votes were taken on that. So is there a motion to seal the minutes of our executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the records of the executive session. My glasses be kept. Be kept, oh, God. Be kept closed pursuant to section 42-46-4 and 42-46-5.
A second to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four to zero. All right. Moving on to the approval of minutes from 4/8/21, they were in our packet. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of 4/8/2021 as presented slash submitted.
A second to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to the public agenda, for those of you out in the public, any, the following agenda items on the public agenda are open for discussion. If you have any questions, you'll be allowed to speak or comment. After a motion is made before the vote is called, you will be permitted to speak. Finally, we'd like to move one of the agenda items to the front. I think it was agenda item number eight, the SRP Support Related Personnel Collective Bargaining Agreement. We'd like to start our evening off with that first. So I believe, Mr. Cowitt, did you want to start the conversation? Oh, Mr. Anderson, did you, I know you're here as our lawyer, so, Mr. Cowitt.
I'll kick it off. So late last year, in the spring and into the summer, we started negotiating with the SRP. I was not part of those initial negotiations, but I did join at the end. From my perspective and the perspective of the people that were involved, it was fair. There were things brought to the table from both sides. Some things were included in the contract and some things were not. Everybody, I think, felt that their voice was heard and that, you know, things were negotiated in good faith. I know Mr. Florio was also part of it. If he wants to add anything, he may, but my understanding, based on my experience and my information from the people involved, is it was negotiated in good faith by the parties involved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cowitt. Mr. Florio, did you have any comments before we make a motion?
Don said it all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murray, anything from you?
No. I just want to make sure, you know, for the people on the call who may not be familiar with the contract, that, you know, we did have a presentation last week on this. We did run through the numbers. For myself, I felt like it seemed to be a fair contract. There's always a push-pull. There's some benefit load increases on the employees. It's going up to 15, 15, 15. There's some plan design changes, including some longevity changes. There is a two and a half percent, two percent, two and a half percent increase over the years. So there is some increases. But again, the push-pull was that we had some benefit adjustments and some language changes in the contract, which we felt were wins for the district overall and will help our students. So I think overall, from my perspective, it was fair, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Pearson, did you have any comments or questions?
No, nothing at this time.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the SRP collective bargaining agreement?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve SRP collective bargaining agreement. How's that?
And is there a second on that?
A second to motion.
Any further discussion from our committee? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public?
Bring in Kim.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Kim, you're allowed to speak. If you could just state your name and address to the record and unmute your microphone. And do you wish to speak? You just need to unmute your mic. You've just been accident.
I'm sorry? One last, one last chance, Kim. All right. All right. Could we have a, I don't see any other hands up, so could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you so much. Moving on to our agenda item number six, the Comprehensive Community Action Program Healthcare at Coventry High School. And I don't know if, Mr. Cowitt, you wanted to start it and then turn it over to our guests?
Yes. So I'm introducing Mr. William Hostesser, who's the COO for CCAP, and Dr. Elena Kautowski, I hope I did okay.
That was close.
Thank you. They are here with CCAP, and they have met with Craig. I think they met with Kathy and I think Mrs. May Cumber at the high school were involved in a discussion about bringing a clinic to the high school, a health clinic to the high school. I think they're going to, I hope, speak to some of the benefits of this kind of move at Coventry High School. And then I think what they're asking from the school committee is support. There's a letter that was included in your packet, which is a letter of support. And I think they would use that letter to move this initiative forward. So I will turn it over to either William or Elena, whoever would like to speak first. And if there's anything I can add, I will. And if Mrs. May Cumber needs to jump in, I'm sure she's in the audience.
Great, well, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time out of your committee work to be able to listen to this presentation. So I know you guys have a lot of work ahead of you. So I will be as brief as possible, but try to give you as much information as possible. For those of you who don't know who Comprehensive Community Action is, we are a nonprofit social service and health service organization that serves the town of Coventry along with the city of Cranston, the town of Foster, the town of Sitewatt, and the city of Warwick. We were established in the mid-'60s under the Johnson administration and specifically under the Act of War on Poverty. There were three particular, three federal movements that took place at that time. It was a community action movement, a community health center movement, and a federal Head Start and Early Childcare program. We, as a community action program, have actually all of those three federal initiatives, and we have been doing those initiatives since the '60s and providing services to the town of Coventry since the '60s. So what we are looking to have a discussion around is a school-based community health center, either on the grounds of the Coventry High School or within the Coventry High School. We haven't kind of figured out what is that, what is the best model for that right now. And a community-based health center in the town of Coventry, or excuse me, in the school department, would serve, it would serve the faculty, it would serve the staff, and it would serve family members of those students, whether they're siblings in other schools or parents. Currently, in the town of Coventry, we do provide a family medicine primary care practice, which is an integrated practice with behavioral health and oral health. And I will turn over to Dr. Kautowski in a moment to describe those very specific services. But additionally, the other services that we provide in the town of Coventry are evidence-based programs such as the Parents as Teachers Program and the Healthy Family America Program, which are evidence-based programs that work with families that are at high risk for abuse and neglect and really work to stabilize those families. We do that throughout the community of Coventry right now. And many of those consumers of that program are also members of our primary care practice. And we also have a WIC, which is the Children Nutritional Program. And that, all these services are located at McCaffrey Boulevard, 191 McCaffrey Boulevard. And very specifically, right now, in the schools, we are providing the Seven Challenges Program, which is an evidence-based program for teens who have problems with substance use and mental health problems. And we work with the teens and the families, and that's taking place in the schools right now. We also provide oral health care in some of the schools, the grammar schools, which is through our West Bay Program. And the West Bay Smiles Program is an oral hygiene program that goes into the schools and does all the oral hygiene for the kids. Then the Molar Express Program, which is our mobile dental unit, follows the hygiene program, and we go to the schools and provide dental services for the kids. So we have a number of programs that are going on in the schools right now and a number of programs that are going on in the town of Coventry. And we want to expand on those programs and actually bring those programs right to the campus of the Coventry High School. And I'll let Dr. Kautowski talk a little bit about the primary care model and the benefits of having this program, particularly for teens. Teens are notorious for not following up with their appointments, whether it's because they don't follow up with them or there are struggles with family, they can't take the time off to get to, to get out of work to bring kids to doctor's appointments or dentist appointments or behavioral health appointments. And this model really works to provide the primary care right at the school. So kids are getting everything they need. They don't miss very important aspects of their health care during their adolescent years. So I would like to introduce Dr. Elena Kautowski to talk a little bit about that.
Great, thanks, William. Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Elena Kautowski, as you know, and thank you for inviting us to your meeting tonight. I'm not only the chief medical officer, I actually see patients in our Coventry Health Center. I've been there for about 16 years. So I'm fortunate to already be working with students and families of the Coventry School System, but I'm very much looking forward to, you know, more opportunity to offer services to others. CCAP has a very wide range of services, as William just said. Our health center is full-spectrum family medicine, so we can see folks at NEH, newborn up. We do wellness exams, sick visits, vaccines, oral health, as William said, health education. We do counseling and treatment of, for mental health disorders. We can refer to specialists. So the model of a school-based health center has so many great options for folks and so many rewards. I wanted to go over a little bit of that. You know, having a health center at the school can really promote health equity, you know, by meeting the needs of the disadvantaged populations and just taking away barriers to care. You know, we can help students and families get health insurance. You know, we have a lot of social services. We can help promote, you know, health school practices through nutrition, physical activity, health education, you know, improving wellness policies and health programs with the school system. They help reduce emergency room visits. Like Liam just said, parents don't need to take time out of work to bring kids to the doctor. You know, then children don't have to miss school to see the doctor. When kids don't feel well, they have a harder time. They miss class, or if they're in class, they might have trouble paying attention because they're not feeling well. So giving them access to a healthcare at school, you know, really puts them in a position to learn. And to show that teens who might not want to go to a doctor are more willing to see somebody at a school-based health center. So having health center staff right there, you know, can really help build that trust. Services can be, you know, physicals, mental health, oral health. We can do vaccines at the school. We can manage chronic conditions like asthma, obesity, you know, really assisting with decreasing health risk behaviors such as substance abuse. This is a tough year, but being adolescent is just a tough time anyway. Mental health evaluation and treatment is really critical at this age and is often an unmet need in this age group. The health center that's at school is definitely in a unique position to not only identify, you know, health problems among children and adolescents, mental health problems, but it can also provide treatment. We can link them up to appropriate services. You know, studies have shown that the availability of school-based mental health services does reduce the risk of depressive episodes and suicide risk among adolescents intervening in a child that is experiencing chronic trauma, you know, is critical. And getting outside mental health services might not be otherwise accessible. We can offer services, you know, to offer support for at-risk students that might be witnesses of domestic violence, victims of abuse themselves. Besides that one-on-one care, you know, that school-based health centers can lead to small group and classroom activities, like lessons on active lifestyle. If a student does have a doctor outside of school, the health center at the school will work with that doctor to offer consistent care. If they don't have a doctor, you know, we can provide care during the school year and then link those students and their families in this to another health center, you know, our Coventry Health Center when school is not in session. And they do work to keep parents, and will work to keep parents in the loop about their children's health. Parents can participate in the visits if they can coordinate with that schedule, with their own schedule. But just overall, they promote a positive school climate, you know, that fosters learning. Children must learn how to be healthy, but they must be healthy to learn. So studies have shown that these school-based health centers do improve academic outcomes, such as improved GPAs, improved attendance, grade promotion, college preparation, and just reduce rates of suspension as well. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Well, thank you, Elena. That was a great review of the benefits of a school-based health center. So I just want to talk for a moment, because I know one of the concerns may very well be, is this going to cost the school, you know, something? And it really doesn't cost the school anything. The investment that the school makes is actually just the investment in bringing this community health center or this school-based health clinic into the fabric of school life. We are applying for a grant from the Health Service Administration specifically for this type of program. And the grant will cover absolutely everything from whether it is remodeling a part of the school, like a classroom to make a school-based health center, or to have a modular unit on the outside. It covers all the costs of our physicians and our nurses and our social workers. It covers all of our overhead expenses. So really, there is no fiscal burden to the school department whatsoever. My hope is, we do get this grant. It is, it's a very competitive grant throughout the United States. This is offered to every state. I think we have a good program that may, certainly would be considered for an award. But again, it's very, very competitive. So, and in terms of payment for services, healthcare services, we do bill health insurance, but we will not charge families who do not have health insurance. As a community health center, we offer services on a slide. And depending on the level of poverty, it could be a zero. So that is actually very beneficial for parents who may have high deductibles or high copayments. We can also work to reduce that down, at least in the school-based health center. And one of the benefits of the school-based health center financially for families is if you're receiving, if the family is receiving care in the school-based health center, we have the ability to either slide down really to zero cost. However, if they were to go to our community health center, we do have a different sliding scale, which the lowest fee would be $30 for, you know, a full service. But because it is a school-based health center and we want to engage the students and we want to engage the families, there's really no out-of-pocket cost to the families. However, I do want to say we will bill insurance, but even if there's a copay, we slide that down to zero so that that doesn't become a barrier for these kids to get their health care or for their family to get their health care as well. So I think that's very important, because certainly you guys all have tight budgets, and I am certainly cognizant of that. And the design of a school-based health center is not to put a burden on the school, but to just bring us into the fabric of the academic life of the kids and the faculty and the staff. So I did want to clarify that before we move on to any types of questions that you all might have.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Cowitt, did you have anything else to add before I ask the school committee members if they have questions? You're good? Okay. So, Mr. Florio, do you have any questions about this school-based health center?
Madam Chair. I believe. I do know this agency, and I've known it because I used to work with them in my previous careers. And I think they will be a great addition to the, to the, to the high school. I really do. I think it's, sometimes kids have issues, and they don't want to talk to their parents about it. It's a lot easier if there's a clinic in the school for that young person to vent to or to tell them what's going on in their lives, because it could be shaming. They could fear shaming, they could fear any number of things. So yeah, this, this is a really good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray?
Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, this is a new model. I actually am glad you presented, educated me a little bit. I did some research on these. There apparently is a couple thousand throughout the United States. And as you mentioned, trails back to the war on poverty in the '60s. There's a lot of research studies actually done on these and has a lot of data. I, I support it. I think it could be a good opportunity. I guess I have one question, this will probably be more for Mr. Cowitt. From a staff level, we'd obviously have a liaison or something like that from the school side. Who would, who would be sort of meshed into the fabric, so to speak, on the, on the school side to do that?
Yeah, you know, at this point, it's kind of early in the conversation. So Mr. Levis was the initial point person. He folded in Mrs. May Cumber being the high school principal. I think as it moves forward, he would have to identify who would be that conduit, who would be that person that would be the point of contact between the health center and the school department.
Because, you know, you make a good point about the financial resources, but there's a, there's a personnel cost to it, right? There's obviously some, some integration needs to happen, some coordination needs to happen. So it's just something that we'll have to consider moving forward. And there was one other thing, but I'm, I'm losing it, I guess. Oh, is there any possibility of integrating into this, into our CTE curriculum? So I know we have some, some TTEs in the health markets. Have you ever done anything where you've, you know, done any sort of work on curriculum coordination with a career and tech program?
Yeah, we, we have the Health Careers Program at the high school, and I'm sure if they were there, we could probably find some creative ways to give kids an opportunity to speak to somebody who's in the field. And as long as we weren't violating anybody's, you know, confidentiality or anything in terms of, you know, medical care, and I'm sure there would be opportunities for kids to get some exposure to what this looks like on the ground. I do want to go back to what you just said, Mr. Murray, about a personnel impact. I don't think, unless I misunderstood, I don't think there's an impact to a personnel cost for us. Is that, is that the case, Mr. Hostesser?
There is no personnel cost to you whatsoever.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I think I was talking about, I mean, there's obviously going to have to be some interface with CCAP on integrating this into the school. So that's, you know, whether it be facility space, whether it be coordination with school staff, things like that. So there's always a burden. I'm not saying it's an, it's an onerous burden on the school district. I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I just, I just want to identify that there is a commitment, right, that we're going to have to put forth in some way. So, and I'm.
I just wanted to put some clarity around that, so our staff didn't think that this was something that would impact our personnel, to say.
Sure. But yeah, in general, I support it. I think it provides a great service to the community. Having school-based health care is definitely something that I think, as you aptly pointed out, is, is, is a benefit to the students who sometimes don't get proper health care outside of the four walls of a school environment. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Pearson?
Not a lot of questions. No, and I appreciate the comment about no direct personnel costs. However, I can't imagine that there isn't indirect personnel costs associated with this based on what the presentation you gave, which is very good, thank you. You know, we could be potentially dealing with increased traffic in and out of, out of our building, depending on how this is set up, and that would have to be managed by school staff. You have, you know, process in place to check visitors in and out of the building. You know, it just takes time and resources to do that. So while we can, I appreciate that, you know, we won't be required to provide any direct staffing. You know, there, there is some, and as Mr. Murray pointed out, there is some coordination between what this health clinic would be and our, our school staff. So it would require resources. I don't have a lot of questions beyond that. I am on record as being very hesitant or concerned about our schools turning into health clinic facilities, because I, I'm just of the opinion, it's not their purpose. But I do, I do appreciate the benefits that you've outlined. I understand them, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I fully support this. I really hope that we are the recipient of one of these grants. I think it would add a lot to our school community, to Coventry in general. So I think it's a good, I think any negatives are far, the positives far outweigh any of the negatives. So, you know, I think at the meeting I attended with, with you, Mr. Hostesser, I don't know if you were there, Elena?
I was.
You were? Oh, gosh, my memory.
That's okay.
I wasn't sure.
William did most of the talking.
I think we did suggest, and I think the principal of the high school, we thought we might visit your clinic in West Warwick and maybe see how things, you know, work there and alleviate any, any questions we may have had or any thoughts of, of, of wondering how it would really act and, you know, work out in our community. But I think the, the basic idea is just wonderful. So I hope we're one of the lucky people, communities that get the grant. So again, thank you for your presentation. I see one hand up in the public, Mr. Murphy, is that true?
Yes. So, Kim, you're up again. If you could just unmute your microphone and say your name and address to the record, please. And did you want to speak? You just need to unmute your microphone. I think it may have just been accidental again.
It might have, yeah. I have a tendency to do that sometimes, too. I don't see any other hands up. So I think we can, I'll entertain a motion for, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Murray?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, one question came to mind and there's something.
That's okay, no problem.
This is obviously a grant, right? The assumption is you get the grant, we move into the school. How long do these grants typically run? And then have you ever had them run out? Where, you know, you set up your facility and essentially then you have to vacate because you run out funding.
That's a great question. So these grants run on two-year cycles. And from the perspective of the funding source, which is the Health Service Administration, HERSA, when they give you a grant, they commit that to your base funding, unless you do something so horrible that, like, they need to take the grant away from you. You really have that for the life of however long the federal government runs. So, I mean, our federal grants have been running anywhere from twenty to thirty-two years. So I feel very confident if we do get this first cycle, this first two-year cycle, and we're successful at it, we will, that will become just my base funding for the life of our community health center.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Good question.
Great, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the letter of support?
Madam Chair, I approve the submission of the letter of support in grant for the Comprehensive Community Action Program Health Clinic at Coventry High School as presented slash amended.
And that's a motion, correct?
That's a motion, yes.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Catherine Patonode.
Yes.
David Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you, all motion carries for the zero. Again, thank you so much for coming and talking to us about it. We really appreciate it and good luck with the grant. Hopefully we will.
In other committee members, we appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Bye now.
All right, so I guess we can move on to agenda item number seven, which is the Alan Shawn Feinstein Middle School Schedule Change Presentation and Discussion. So, Mr. Coward, did you want to start that, please?
Yes, so last week at our meeting, I brought up briefly that we were doing a schedule change. And we were talking about the staffing of that schedule change. And I think I had noted that I didn't want to go too deeply into the presentation because I wanted the people who did the work to be able to present what was going on there and the people who are closest to the work to be able to present their schedule ideas. I will say that I am pretty closely connected to this. I started talking to the, the administration and staff there about a year and a half ago when we started looking at bringing in some high-quality curriculum materials. Because pretty much everything we are looking at from a curriculum perspective requires, you know, some more instructional minutes. And so one of the things I was looking for is some more minutes, especially in the core content areas. In addition to that, we wrote a strategic plan. And in our strategic plan, we identified that we wanted to bring world language into our middle school. Our middle school is one of the few middle schools in the area that had only offering world language as a, as an elective. It wasn't a, a core program course. And many schools around ours, many middle schools do have world language. The benefit of that is when our students are in middle school, some of them will be able to get their first year of world language done at the middle school so that when they enter the high school, they're actually entering at level two. And so they would have an opportunity to get levels two, three, and a four AP, which is, you know, you know, high-level world language classes. Versus now, most of the kids who enter the high school enter at world language level one, you know, Spanish one or Italian one. So that's a benefit. Another thing that has been going on throughout the state is an initiative around computer science and coding. And, and many of the districts around us have built it into their schedule that students all have an opportunity to have computer science class at the middle school level. It does a lot in terms of exposing all the students to computer science. It also does, does a lot around making sure that minorities and women and, and people who are less represented in computer science get an opportunity to have some exposure so that when they go to the high school, that may be an option. Or college, that may be an option where they could pursue that field. And it's a field where, you know, there are many groups that are underrepresented. So we wanted to get world language, you know, in the high school. And then the last thing is, you know, we had talked about how we support struggling learners and how we support students. And, you know, we looked at our high school model and we know that we have some kids who need extra help and extra support. And we were trying to find ways to work that in. You know, and, and as in a comparison, you know, we have, some of our elementary schools have one or two reading specialists for a school of three hundred and fifty kids. And our middle school has one reading specialist for a school of approximately eleven hundred. And so there was some inequity there, which, you know, I think is pretty obvious, especially when we start looking at, you know, some of our test, test scores. And people say, oh, I, I noticed that, you know, there's a little bit of a dip at the middle school or there's, you know, some struggling learners are not getting, making the growth they should. Well, we, we purchased the curriculum to help remediate that. But we also need a staffing to support those kids so that if they need a little bit extra help, we have the people in place to do that. So, you know, we, we are trying to reinstate some staff that had been cut over the years. I mean, when I first got to Coventry, there was either two or three reading specialists at the middle school. And now we're down to one. There was a math coach at the middle school and now there's zero. And so we're trying to bring those positions back in so that we can make ourselves whole. And in coupling all of that together with the curriculum, the schedule, the staffing, to put the middle school on the right footing to move forward. So I don't want to say anything else because they did all the work. I just was happy to see that so many of the things I pushed for ended up in the final schedule. So I'm going to turn it over to Ozzy and Joe and I'll let them kind of lead you through this whole process. Thank you.
You said it all, Don. What am I going to say now? Jim, do you want to, Mr. Murphy, do you want to put the presentation on? Should I present my screen? Oh, there we go.
Want to advance?
Yeah, let's do that. As Mr. Coward, very well said. Hi, everyone, by the way. There were some structural problems with our schedule. The first one being that our periods were fifty minutes each. We had instated a period we called WIN, which stands for what I need. For the intervention portion of it, we were doing really well. We were star-based and we were looking at data to put students in the math and the reading tier-two intervention that they needed. But fifty percent of our teams were in need of enrichment and we really didn't have a great way of offering enrichment courses. We were not able to offer every one of our students at least a whole year of computer science, as Mr. Coward said. And we also had very limited access to world languages. Additionally, structurally, our schedule was very inequitable for common planning time for our teachers. And the biggest point for the structural deficit that we had was that we had thirty-five assigned periods a week for teachers, but the contract actually calls for twenty-five. So we had to reduce the number of teaching periods for our staff to twenty-five as the contract needed. So I just want to give a big shout out to a lot of our staff members, especially Courtney Macropolis and Derek Larguino, who ran our scheduling committee. We ran the numbers and we hope that you like what we have come up with. Next slide, please, Mr. Murphy. So I, I thought this visual would be good just to kind of see what that WIN period would look like. So our ULSS teachers are going to be taking their students for direct services during that time. So if you think about a team of a hundred students, about ten to fifteen of them would be with their special educator. Now, we would like an off-team teacher to do some tier-reading and ELA, reading and writing ramp-up. We would like an off-team math teacher to just do the same thing for math. But then now that we have kind of targeted our struggling learners and those that need to catch up, we would have the kids that are high-achieving and would like to be challenged. So therefore, with this new proposal, we can offer all of our sixth graders that don't need the math and ELA interventions or ramp-up, coding. And seventh and eighth graders, they would be either getting Italian and/or Spanish. Our hope is that through the years, our numbers in the math WIN and ELA WIN would kind of decrease so that we can increase and expand our world language and coding programs. Next slide, please. So this is another way of showing that our numbers in each of those cohorts, our pathways, if you will, are going to be this way for sixth grade. So we, we would have a math class, an ELA class, that would be either ramp-up or tier-two interventions. And then we would have two coding classes per grade six per each team. And also the ULSS WIN is just for our special education students. The same kind of goes with our seventh and eighth. One would be Italian and what would be, one would be Spanish. Next one, same kind of a thing this was. So with, with our new proposal, we were able to increase our instructional minutes from fifty to fifty-five minutes, really, really being intentional about our what I need WIN period to be either an intervention or an enrichment. We would be able to offer those students that don't need the intervention in math and ELA, the coding class. The same for world language for grade seven and eighth, it would be a pathway. So if they are taking Spanish in grade seven, they could take Spanish Part B in grade eight. So hopefully they will be entering, grade nine, entering in Spanish too, as a lot of our districts, other districts are doing. Common planning time will be equitable for all of our teachers as stated and required in our contract. Again, the number of periods have been adjusted. And we have proposed two advisory times per week, which is again a Rhode Island requirement, state requirement. One of them would be school-wide, so it could be interest-based. That's where our big band and big chorus would meet. And the other one would be team-based, which would focus on social emotional needs of our students. Next one, please. So this would mean that at the end of the day, we would need some support from the district. We need some resources for our curriculums for both math and ELA that we're proposing in terms of ramp-up. We're going to call it something better. Hopefully we'll come up with a good name. And also for grade six, we will have some exploratory introduction to cultures for some of our students that would get that elective, but we do need to write that course. In terms of FTEs, we need one FTE for math teacher, one for ELA teacher. Those are the two little things that you saw in the pie chart for the math off-team ramp-up and ELA ramp-up. And then we are hoping to get your support in adding interventionists. As Mr. Coward said, we have one reading specialist for the entire school. And we would like to increase that by one and get one also math interventionist, which we don't have right now. And that's kind of what I have, I think. And we are open to questions, so.
And, you know, hi, everybody. Hi, everybody, I wanted to just say hi. Thank you for presenting. One of the things I just want to echo that, that Don Coward said is that one of the things that you tasked us with is to try to get our test scores to, to rise up. Over the years, yes, we did have three reading teachers, we had a math interventionist, we do not have them anymore. That is huge because there is a large population that has fallen behind and that is one of the areas that we do need it. We also, obviously, if you look at any schedule throughout the, the, the country that they feel is working in the middle school area, it is that enrichment block, that WIN block. There's many schools even within the state that, from Wunsakit, that recently there were some articles in the newspaper about how important that enrichment block was. So that's something that we're trying to put inside our schedule. Another thing I'd just like to really just, you know, point out is that when you saw that about contractual language, there was originally that, that they're teaching thirty-five. That's because there were so many teachers that were caught. Anytime that position needed to be cut, it, it, most of the time it was at the middle school level. And we're trying to just bring back what we need so that we could get the kids what we are and comply with state, you know, regulations. And at the same time, another thing that we, we talked about that I just want to kind of echo that Ms. Norbelucci talked about how the minutes were raised from fifty to fifty-five minutes. All of the highly qualified curriculum that, that you, that everybody was looking at to try to get those test scores up, to have it, or K through twelve, you know, kind of backwards map it and get that curriculum that we need, needed fifty-five minutes at least time in the class to get everything that they needed done. So with that being said, that's why we brought the schedule. We looked at many different schedules, some we just couldn't run because, you know, being honest, we just didn't have the staffing to run. But this one came, was a schedule that came up. You know, hats off to Ms. Norbelucci.
I think we lost Joe.
I think he froze, yeah.
But I think we got the gist.
Of course, the minute he wants to say something good about me, he's frozen, look at.
Oh, gosh. Okay, if he comes back and he wants to, a comment, we'll let him at that point. Maybe he shut his video off so he'd get a better internet connection. So I'm going to add, go around the school committee and you can ask your questions if you have any, or your comments. And I'm going to start with Mr. Florio.
Madam Chair, working with, with Joe on the, several committees through the years, this seems to be a very fine presentation. Ozzy, you did a wonderful job. You did a great job. And it, it, it really is very needed. Reading specialists are so difficult to get these days, Madam Chair. Just as difficult as math specialists. I, I don't think we have, I think we have maybe one where I work, but, which is in another district. But, you know, it's, it's hard, it's hard. And I support what's been done at the middle school and the change, then the schedule change at the middle school.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Florio.
Thank you for the presentation. So I put it through my resident expert here, my daughter Abby, who is in these programs. And so I'm not in the day-to-day, so I put it through her. She agreed that WIN is currently underutilized. She's, her, her words were, I'm bored. And, and having, and as a parent, I never like to hear that, right? So she agreed that having some type of enrichment would be well-received. I think the language is great. Coding, in talking to my daughter and friends, is, is not their favorite subject. I don't know the background on coding and, and how it fits into the state plans. But, you know, you're much more of an expert than I. and how it fits into the state plans. But, you know, you're much more of an expert than I. The name "What I Need" is a little deceiving to me because in programs where I've seen "What I Need," students usually participate in the programming, and that's truly what they need, right? Whereas we're kind of telling them what they need, right? We're saying this is, this is the program. So that's not to criticize. It's just something that maybe in future years you may want to think about because I have heard about good models where it's true what I need. Kids actually say, I need this. Whether, no matter where they fit in the spectrum. And actually, one model, which our architect on the building committee brought up, his son went through this, is that they would have, it would be dynamic classes. They would have a class, a student would bring up a topic, and they would have a class on that topic. And it'd be current events and different things. So I know that's not this model, but the what I need, you know. But I do agree with the language enrichment. Just a question, we have some Spanish at eighth grade now, is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so.
But it's offered as an elective and not to everybody. It's basically whoever that teacher can get, and it's kind of a random thing. So we're hoping to offer it to everybody.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. So, and I appreciate all the work that is going into this. I think anytime we can enrich it, enrich our activities, increase schedule, increase rigor, it's great. And I think we need that at the middle school. Then I get to the budgetary implications, which is always the bad stuff, right? So this is where I turn to Mr. Sands and I say, has this been built into our budget for this year? And, you know, how do we pay for it without sacrificing something else? And has that been discussed?
It, it is, from what I understand, from, from my understanding of this, it has been built into the budget under the COVID part at this point. So we are okay for the next couple of years on this, on this line.
Can I add to that? We're going to, we're going to look at four positions. We're looking at two positions that are intervention positions. And those are positions that work with small groups of kids at tier-two and tier-three. And then other two positions are kind of what Ozzy's calling the ramp up. I know she wants to rebrand that, but those are the on-team, like, schedule, in the schedule, you know, in the win block positions. Those two positions, which are crucial to this scheduling running, are sitting on the local side in terms of staffing because we don't want those positions to go away when COVID goes away. The intervention positions, the ones that are working with small groups of kids at the current time, are sitting on the COVID side of the budget. But those are positions that we would be looking at closely, looking at the impact, and hoping to be able to either move into the local at the end of the cycle with COVID or, or, you know, redefine in terms of how we fund it.
Okay. Yeah, and I figured that. You tell me, you know, I figured that the two positions were built into the budget, or at least are going to have to be. And then the interventionalist, I know that we had talked about the COVID budget. So not to be the Debbie Downer in the situation, I agree, you know, fundamentally, but the cuts happened in the past for a reason, right? What I don't want to do is add positions, then a year later, we're back in the same situation. So I just want some surety, you know. I think it's a great plan. And I also don't want to end up in a situation where I'm sacrificing, because we're hiring two new individuals here, then I've got to make a cut somewhere else that may sacrifice something at high school, elementary school, or others, right? We don't want to do that. So, so Mr. Sands, just to clarify, from what I'm hearing is in this year's budget, which we've been presented so far, this has been built in for two new staff, full-time positions.
Correct.
Okay. And, and obviously, the interventionalist, we're going to hear more about this tonight on the COVID funding. That's been built into the COVID budget.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, that's all the real questions I have. I support it. I just want to make sure it's sustainable. I don't want to have to be here in two years cutting those same employees out of the budget. So I'm hoping, Mr. Sands, that you'll work with the team and figure out how to make it a sustainable pathway. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Pearson.
Stole my thunder. No, great, great point. And thank you for, for getting some clarification, Mr. Sands and Mr. Coward regarding which positions are COVID-funded and which, which we're expecting to be part of our ongoing budget. So it is a concern, you know, we're, we're running, we keep telling the town we're running operation, sorry, structural deficit. So bringing on two additional positions is tough. So I'm counting on our administration to find out how we can make that work with the current budget constraints that we're going to have. Other than that, so budget stuff aside, love the presentation. Great job. It is about time we get foreign language into the middle school. So, so I do appreciate that. It's, it's nice to see this, this kind of work done and the benefits that it will have for students. So, so thank you and continue to bring, bring us great ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And I want to echo my committee members. Thank you so much for the presentation, for looking at how we can improve things at the middle school. I mean, when you look at the scores, you know, we have been seeing this and knowing as a committee, as a, as a, as a learning community, that we had to do something. And I think this is one way to, to work with our kids to make sure that they excel. You know, middle school is, is a, is a tough place across the state. A lot of our scores do fall in the middle school, and we're no exception. There's lots of reasons for that, but part of it is the enrichment piece and the intervention piece. So, you know, increasing the rigor of, of what you're able to offer to children as well as this whole intervention thing. I, I get the budget concerns, but I really think that, I mean, everything is a priority for us, obviously. It's, you know, but I'm going to trust the support of, of your team and Ms. Lucian and our administrative team across the district that they will find a way to fund this once maybe COVID funds are no longer with us. So I, my hat is off to you for all the fine work, and I'm excited to see it happen this coming year. And I truly believe you guys are in that situation. You know what's best and what's going to move the school forward. And so I think it's a really positive change in how we're doing business right now. So I thank you for the work, and I hope to see some great results. Mr. Coward, did you have something?
Yes, just two final words. One was about something Mr. Murray said. I think we're holding it as a placeholder as coding, but it's really computer science. It's responsible, responsible use of internet. It's about being a good citizen. It's about vetting what's available and what you see in cybersecurity. And it's not just coding. Coding is part of it, but I think there's a lot more to it. And I, and I think really the gist of it is building responsible users so that students who use the computer know how to use it responsibly. For those who want to code, there will be coding in it, but it's not going to be just coding. I just wanted to put a little bit of clarity around that. So your daughter does not have to freak out about that part of it. And then the last thing, just to Mr. Pearson's point about the budget, I think it's, I think he's right that, you know, we do have to find a way to make sure we fund these positions so we can sustain this schedule. And it made me think of the joint meeting we had with the school, with the town council a few weeks ago. And Dr. Dixon asked me specifically about, you know, how can we prove to the community? What, what can we do to make the community know that we're giving them a good product? That we're going to convince them that the investment is worth their money? Well, if we want to get the biggest bang out of this middle school, if we want to get the most out of our teachers and our kids, this schedule is putting us in that position to do so. And if we want to make an investment that's going to impact student learning, this is the kind of investment you make. And the trickle-up is going to be that kids are going to be going to the high school in, in a situation where they've had more time with content, curriculum areas, exposure to world language, exposure to computer science, and for the kids who are struggling, maybe helping close that gap so that when they get to the high school, they can take courses that are going to help them be successful in whatever choices they make post-secondary. So I just wanted to, you know, this is a worthwhile investment, and if it's not important, then really nothing's important, right? This is, this is, this is the kinds of things we should be doing if we want to move.
Can I add to that one last sentence? You know, you mentioned the town council last week. I think Dr. Dixon asked a good question. She said, what is our story? And truly with this schedule, I do think our story is benefiting all of our students because historically, we talk about a lot of struggling students. And I don't think I was able to proudly say we had something for our students that were higher level and higher achieving. So I do think this is really, Mr. Murray, I think this is really what our kids need. You know, we're offering gap, closing the gaps, but also offering students that need to be pushed some sort of venue for, avenue for pushing them. Our story is about the kids, and I do truly believe that this is about kids. And I hope that we can prove it with data in a couple of years.
I believe you.
And, and just so everybody knows, hi, everybody. If you know the day that we're having, this kind of just ended up the par for the course with the rest of it. So I'm just keeping my video off. But we're even now, you know, we're trying to look at, like, to add what Ozzy said. We're looking at programs and courses of things that, that other schools don't have. Currently, right now, we have geometry that there's almost no other middle school in the state that has that. So we're trying to do our best to, to spread out and be a school that is for all of our kids. That's what our true role is.
Thank you, Ms. Lucian. Finally glad you were able to talk with us again. So with that being said, I would like to bring it out to the public if there are any questions or comments. So I'm not seeing any hands up, Mr. Murphy. We'll give it a second.
Oh, wait a second.
Whoop, someone did.
Kelly, you're up. If you could just state your name and address the record, unmute your microphone.
Hi, Kelly Ranica, CTA president. I too would like to thank everybody for working hard on the schedule. I think sometimes when I speak and I talk about staffing and cuts, people think it comes from just a union president mouth. But I also have two children in the district. I have a son who's in the fourth grade, and I have a niece who is graduating the high school this year. And one of the things that is very frustrating as a parent who's in the know is when we make cuts. So yes, being in a body, and I'm a union president, and I always worry about that body and how they're going to maintain their family. But when we cut, we really always do hurt kids. Because if you look at the middle school, as I said, I mean, that's a fact that you should really see that there's eleven hundred students in the middle school and not one math interventionist. So if you leave an elementary school where there's one or two, and then you go to the middle school where the content is harder, you have no support, why do you think the test scores are dropping? Or you have other high schools that are competing where their students are having foreign language and STEM classes in the middle school, and we don't. So when our students get to the high school, they're already behind the eight ball. So there's less students able to take higher-level honors courses or AP courses. So everything's built upon. I mean, Kathy, you've been around for a long time. We used to have gifted and talented programs at the elementary level. We used to worry about both ends of the spectrum. We used to make sure that we really touched base with our struggling learners and tried to intervene to help them. But when you drop that ball at any one level, elementary, middle, or high, you're pushing your dropout rate because kids get frustrated and they feel that they can't. So I know I talk about staffing, we make cups and it cuts, and I know I'm passionate about it, but I hope that you realize by just seeing this presentation, I'm passionate on two levels. It's the human aspect of it from a union president, but it's also the academic and educational value. When your own kids go to the school, you want the best for them. And, you know, I know Mr. Pearson has children in the school, Mr. Murray has children in the school. You know, you want the best for your kids, and every time we cut, we hurt kids. We hurt adults, but we hurt kids. So over the years, we've eliminated, over in the past nine years, we've eliminated over twenty teaching positions. And I just want you to see how everyone affects kids. And then in the long run, it's why are your test scores so poor? So I applaud the middle school for really working at this. I applaud the administration of the school committee for supporting it. But we need to get our kids on par with the districts because our families and our kids are good, they're bright, they're hardworking. And when we don't have the staff there for them, we're the ones that let them down. So for my own kids and for the kids of the community, I'm pleased that we're trying to get back in a direction where kids that need extra support will get it at each level. We can't just drop a level and expect them to pick up themselves. And that our students that are a little bit on the higher-end side, a little gifted and talented, they are going to be able to now compete with their peers from neighboring communities because we'll have courses that will prepare them to do so. So I just want to say thank you to everybody as a union leader and as a parent.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Kelly. I couldn't agree more. So any other hands? Up, Mr. Murphy?
There are no more hands.
All right. Then I think we can move on. Again, thank you so much, middle school administrators. You can, you can say bye if you'd like. Go do work that you have to do. Thank you so much for being here.
Everybody, and we always like everything. We always appreciate your support. So thank you all for what you do too.
You're entirely welcome. Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Okay, so we can move on to nine. The presentation of the COVID budget using SR2 and American Recovery Plan, the ARP funds discussion and a vote. So, Mr. Coward, would you like to start?
I'm going to get started, and Mr. Sands will jump in. He's the numbers guy, so he's going to be able to explain things in a little bit more detail. But just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, we brought this at the last meeting, the COVID budget. We went through it in detail with the school committee. You did approve a portion of that budget for Chromebooks so that we could get our order in and get that moving along. There were a few things left that, you know, people on the school committee wanted more time with. And so we tabled the rest of the, the budget until today. We're not going to go through the whole presentation again, but I think Mr. Sands will touch on any questions you may have. But we're just asking you really to vote on the staffing portion of it, which is actually dovetails back to the middle school presentation you just heard, and then the summer enrichment, summer programming part of that budget as well.
Mr. Murphy, could you put up the, the slide for the summer programs? Okay, so as, as we discussed last time, you could keep it on the top one. We showed you the personnel budget, and we went through all the factors of the personnel budget, how it was developed and so forth. The summer budget was also something that we, we did go through and talked about. And one of the aspects was that we had left a hundred thousand dollars to be determined. We have determined that to be targeted, targeted tutoring for forty-five thousand. And then we also increased the CTE program to have seventy-five campers as opposed to the fifty campers prior. The Chromebooks have already been passed by, by the school committee and have been ordered at this point. If there's any questions, please feel free to ask them. I don't think we need to go any further on this.
Thank you, Mr. Sands and Mr. Coward. I'll start with Mr. Florio. Any questions for presenters?
Just, just one question, Madam Chair. How much money are you looking for us to approve this evening?
Mr. Florio, it would be the two million, one thirty-one, six sixty-four plus the five ninety-three, two hundred for a total of two, about two point seven.
Thank you, Mrs. Sands. Thank you very much.
Any further questions, Mr. Florio?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Mr. Murray.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sands, for the presentation. So as you know, or some of you know, some of you don't know, I sent a pretty lengthy email to the administration this week. As you know, I was the one who was advocating to hold up the budget. I felt it was my duty to go through, do some due diligence and make some suggestions, which I have. I know there's approximately two million to be undeveloped. I just wanted to go through those suggestions that I had, you know, public environments, so my fellow, fellow committee members could hear. I just wanted to go through those suggestions that I had, you know, public environments and my fellow fellow committee members could hear. I'll summarize the email. It's quite lengthy, but I will send it to the members after this meeting. Um, my first suggestion is investments in core curriculum and resources, restoring their curriculum coordinator position, adding resources and potentially obtaining outside resources to beef up our curriculum, which has been under development for some time, but hasn't quite gotten there. And we have a unique opportunity to potentially get it there in the next couple of years by by putting some of these resources at it. The second suggestion was in investing in combating absenteeism. We've seen absenteeism rise. We're not exclusive. Um, but we have to get those kids back in the classroom if we hope to uh, close the education gap and the learning gap. So the um, putting some money into that. Investing in advanced programs and opportunities. So Ms. Aronik is, Ms. Aronik is this point, earlier point, is we used to have gifted programs. We've, we have invested some in AP courses, and we're continuing to beef those up. But if we truly want to be equitable and service both ends, um, I'm advocating that we maybe look at restoring some gifted programs and AP courses to really challenge those at the upper end of the spectrum as we are providing the the assistance to those who need the help. Um, and really looking cross-spectrum as as equity, um, which we seem to be throwing around these days pretty handily. Um, so equity has to come at all ends. So I'm advocating that investment. Um, investing in enrichment programs. So I pointed out that a lot of PTOs and PTAs have taken hits um, because the parents are engaged in the schools. And so how do we support them in this upcoming year? And maybe fund some of those programs that provide assistance, offset some of those expenses they would normally incur, and allow them to put some of that money aside. Um, investing in public relations and community outreach. This may not seem like a hyper, but one thing we saw with COVID is that we had, quite frankly, a fairly poor education, a poor information outreach in the beginning. We certainly have improved. But one of the things that we're going to have to continue to do is as kids come back is to engage the parents and and get the kids re-engaged. And part of that is PR efforts, and that's not, you know, pass a tax budget. That's this is what's going on in our schools. These are the new programs. These are the available options. This is the information that's pertinent to you today. And we don't have that person. We have overrun staff who are doing the day to day who are trying to keep up. So for instance, as I was in Don's office today, he's trying to type up emails about this situation at the middle school while he's dealing with 14 other things. We don't have a communications person to push that information out of the district. And then the last suggestion was invest in planning. And that means planning at all all levels throughout the district. As we've talked about this incessantly, we need to plan for the future, and how do we do that? Where are we going? And this presents a unique opportunity with the funding to potentially do that. So there's $2 million unallocated. I know that we're not discussing that tonight. Those are my suggestions. The administration is aware, and I'm making the the school committee aware tonight. Um, as far as the what I'm seeing in front of me is as far as the breakdown, a couple of questions for Mr. Sands. Have you met with or has Mr. Levis met or anyone from the administration met with the YMCA and the Recreation Department?
Yes. I, yeah, he, Harold can jump into it, but he's met with both parties numerous times uh, to discuss opportunities for our kids to participate. When I say our kids, a school department, uh, students participating in the summer programming at those camps uh, with us helping to um, support the the tuition, right, the fee, so that students can get academic support while they're there, but also get the SEL a portion of, uh, you know, life at camp, right? Being able to be kids again, outside playing, enjoying uh, fun activities that teach kids uh, things differently than they get in a in a traditional classroom setting. So we're working with the Annenberg people on high density tutoring. And one of the the ideas that came up out of that work was working with municipal organizations, people within your circle, your sphere, to see if you can um, get kids where they're at, right? So instead of always asking students to come into the school buildings to get summer support, how can we go to where they already are? So Mr. Levis initiated conversations with Mr. Smith at the Y and uh, and then with the Recreation Department to see what that would look like. So tho- those conversations are are moving along. And then I know Mr. Sands was able to get through their websites and some other contacts, uh, some general ideas of what the fee structure would be. Uh, we actually think that it may even adjust a little bit uh, as we get closer to making this happen. But uh, the the word, the ball is rolling on that. And that's why it's kind of important to to get this vote done so we can start moving forward on that summer portion.
In the Recreation Department, you've met with as well?
Yep, and and Mr. Levis brought it up when we met with the um, the town, the town manager and their finance director.
Okay. I mean, my biggest concern, and and I I don't disagree with any of these programs, is that we haven't fully baked by the time summer comes. We're already getting late. So if we're in process, we're approving these monies, it's a lot of money we're throwing at it, right? So I want, I just want to ensure in my position that it's effectively utilized and it achieves the goals that we're intending it to achieve, right? That it's going to, you know, obviously, if this isn't really about closing the education gap, this is in the in the learning gaps that have happened, this is about normalcy, right? Um, getting kids back to being kids and and socializing and emotional. So I get.
Part of it. Um, I'm sorry to interrupt, part of it. So the YMCA part and the Red Gate Recreation Department, a part of it is definitely embedded SEL slash academics. But we also have on the board um, some high density tutoring with our um, our structured literacy support work that we did with kids last year. We want to continue this year. The elementary principals are working on a summer program. We're also looking at the enrichment opportunities that teachers would be able to offer at every level. And then CTE would be a workaround um, academics that are in their pathway. So part of it is built around normalcy, 100%. And I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do want you to know that there is also layers to the summer programming that is specifically about academic support, which has been identified in the S of funding as being a target area um, for the use of these funds.
Gotcha. Well, don't make it boring either, Don. Kids have to go.
If you know me, I'm not a boring guy.
All right. No, I appreciate all the work done on it. Um, I was a little hesitant last week. Obviously, I wanted to make sure that you had some conversations with the Y and Recreation and and really thought this through a little bit further. So I appreciate you taking the time and and doing that. So that's all I have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Pearson.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any questions. Um, I think that um, what's here is definitely makes a lot of sense. Um, and I mean, you have the the guidelines that are coming down from the federal government is how you can spend that money, really, quite honestly. And um, I trust that great decisions will be made in this area. Um, and all I can say is thank God we we're getting the money because um, we have a lot of work to do and our kids, you know, have suffered quite dramatically during this pandemic. So um, are we ready for a motion?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I make the motion to approve the COVID budget using S2 in America Recovery Plan ARP funds as presented.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second the motion. Should we stack, uh, stated amount though, just because it's?
2.7 million.
I think, I don't know. Mr. Sands, can you give us the exact amount? I don't have a calculator.
I have calculated. It's it's 2,724,864 dollars.
All right.
Hey, 2 million. 724?
2,724,864.
Okay, thank you, Luke.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, are there any comments from the citizens gathered before I call for the votes?
Was there a second? Did I miss that?
Oh.
I I did second.
He seconded it, but he just, we wanted to get the amount of money. Um, I don't see any hands up. So could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Catherine Patnod.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries for the zero. Uh, moving on to our next agenda item, the FY22 budget discussion and approval.
So I'll I'll start again. I'll be brief and then turn it over to Mr. Sands because this is his baby. Um, so we've we've brought this FY22 budget to you a few different times. Um, it's been tweaked along the way a little bit. And I think what Mr. Sands is going to present to you today is just a few adjustments that we've made to that budget. Uh, you'll be able to see the summary sheet. He'll be able to explain what he's done for you to um, uh, then have an opportunity to ask any questions that you.
Mr. Murphy, Murphy, could I please have the um, PowerPoint or the slides? Okay, so we we just, we just passed the revised COVID budget. One of the things that we're doing with this COVID budget is we're taking all COVID related items that were that were previously on the budget, off the budget. Um, and we'll show that in just a minute. And then we'll talk about state aid, tuition from LEAs, and the maintenance going forward into FY2020, 2022. Next slide, please. This is what we just voted on. Um, if you notice on the personnel, there's quite a quite, quite a few different um, personnel pieces to the to this budget. A lot of those were previously incorporated into the um, budget that you, we have revised a couple of times. And we'll show you that in just a second. Please go to the next foot, slide. Okay, this just summarizes the COVID budget and and that we're we're actually looking to um, increase, have at least 500 to 1,000 campers over a month and a half. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the budget that um, you have looked at for two or three times now. The changes to this budget are, if you notice, there is no COVID line any longer, which was for 108,813,000. That has been taken out because that was based off of personnel. One thing that we do have to worry about is state aid. That is not a solid number right now, but Governor McKee has said that he'll stay as close close as possible to those um, state aid numbers. So we are confident or a little more confident that that's going to be a solid number going forward. Um, tuitions from the other LEAs um, are low at this point, but with targeted advertising and marketing, uh, we feel that that's, those numbers are going to start going up. Uh, one other area that I do want to um, show is the maintenance cost for next year. Um, that was a substantial amount. It was a 1.9 million dollars. Um, we have um, through COVID and through what's going on with COVID funds in ERVs, we feel confident that the 228,677 is a conservative number going forward. That concludes this presentation. It's, it's a, it's a simple presentation where we we just basically look at, look at some of the things that are occurring. You can go to the next slide. So it it just basically reiterates what I just told you. Thank you all very much.
Um, thank you, Mr. Sands and Mr. Cowitt. Um, so I'm going to go around and and ask you if you have any questions. So, Mr. Florio, any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair. I think uh, Mrs. Sands did an excellent job.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the presentation. Uh, if history has taught me anything, it's that this will continue to change. But um, one question on the maintenance, uh, it went down significantly. I know we can count staff, current staff and trades to it. How did it go down? Did we apply all the SRA funds that we've already spent on HVAC? Is that how that happened or?
So you have the, you have the school maintenance budget, you have the housing aid that is is there, you have the trade salaries. You have the bond interest. You have COVID funds that are 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 slated in the capital in um, capital improvement plans for next year uh, of 230,000, which are basically the HVACs. And then, I'm sorry.
Um, so that COVID funding that was outlined already at the bottom of the sheet, that 230,000 is baked into that number.
That, yeah, that went into that number, correct. And then we had a fine, finally, we had the ERVs, which were part of the CRF fund that was back, um, I would say back three or four months ago. We have ordered the ERVs, but they probably will not come in until after the summer, so they will fall into this area right here.
Okay. I guess my, and I guess bond interest does count. Um, if I remember and looking at the state law, there were certain things that can be counted and not counted. And I wasn't sure, I didn't realize that interest was one of them. Maybe that's a ride thing. I mean, it's fine for this year. I think we're getting over some humps, but I think, you know, just highlight moving forward. Um, we're not baking anything into the budget that's substantial, and it really isn't covering, you know, counting things like bond maintenance, and I've said this before, uh, bond, bond interest from past debt and and, you know, things that we cobbled together to qualify. Some of it actually isn't maintenance, right? It's not, and and it's not yelling at you. It's just pointing out the fact that it's not really touching our buildings. It's it's checking the box for the state. But it's not truly like the town giving us 1.8 million dollars and saying, hey, go, go spend it on the roof. Go fix the gym floor. Um, and we've done this in the past. Sarah did a wondrous job of trying to keep the town out of the the red on this. But um, you know, I always pointed out that we can't hold this off forever. So um, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, that was, yeah, I I completely agree with you on that. Um, it's something that we have to continue to look at and and move forward on.
Um, thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you for the update to, as Mr. Murray put it, our ever-evolving fiscal 22 budget. I think these are minor changes, so I don't really have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Pearson. Again, thank you again. Um, I can, I echo my fellow members. Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, and I guess we'll move forward. And so is there a motion to approve the FY22 budget as presented?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget as presented slash amended in the amount of 75,585,873 dollars, uh, 873 dollars, that's right, with 48,968,733 dollars coming from local appropriate appropriations.
I'll just, I'll just make one correction. It's 48,961,733.
Right.
Not to be petty, but I mean, I'll second the motion.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, and before I call for the roll, are there any questions from the public gathered?
No one has their hand raised.
I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Catherine Patnod.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries for the zero. Um, moving on to citizens' comments, are there any comments from the citizens on our Zoom call?
No one has raised a hand.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Murphy. I think we can go to scheduling the next meeting. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Murphy. I think we can go to scheduling the next meeting. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the next virtual meeting of the Coventry School Committee be scheduled for Thursday, April 28th, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
29. You need to put your glasses on there.
29, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, yeah.
That nine looks like an eight.
Today. Oh, my God. I lost my glasses today.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, and could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Catherine Patnod?
Yes.
David Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries for to zero. Moving on to our final adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? I have 8:38.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the meeting of, that the meeting be adjourned at 8:28, correct?
38.
8:38.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, man.
We could just raise our hands for a, a.
Tonight, okay.
Motion carries for to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Have a good rest of the evening and thank you to all our attendees for attending.
Madam Chair, two weeks. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have a meeting for two weeks. It's the first time in a long time, huh?